7:30 PM, February 3rd, 2014. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of January 27th, 2014.
Approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
I...
Any opposed?
I made a suggestion to Jen for clarification on the issue of the grant for the war v. 18...
Yeah, and I made it. Did everybody get it?
Okay, so that's taken as added.
She made a correction, I think.
Yes, then fine, now I'm in favor.
Yep, that was a good catch. Okay, moving right along, payment of bills.
Will we pay the bills?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's cruise them right along. Uh, our next order of business is a report from Nancy McGuire from DCA.
What about our cash on hand?
That's for next.
I was informed that's only the second meeting in the month.
Yeah, I don't know why you have that this month.
I don't know either.
Just to show that we have enough cash to pay the bills, I assume.
It says February 3rd.
Yeah, she usually does that out of the... We do that at the second meeting.
She's under a lot of stress.
You're back.
Yeah, 'cause she could... I don't know, I could tell them that. I could tell them that. What? You ready, Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can give you instructions.
Yeah, so...
Film director.
Are you gonna stalk real loud or you don't like microphones?
I'm not sure whether it's on or not. It's in one or the other. It's on or not. I don't really need it on.
The thing, this is... It will not turn itself...
Um... I don't know what this is.
What a full face.
I don't have any experience with that important. I have written a few notes so that you don't... I don't get psych crushes. And I'm here really because of the new members of the town council who may not be as familiar with the, um, DCA, the Downtown Chester Town Association. So I thought I would just give a little overview of what we are and then some suggestions of things that are sort of current for now, certainly not the full agenda of what we are considering. For those of you who are not familiar with the Downtown Chester Town Association, we are a 501(c)(6) organization and it was really created in the 1960s, a long time ago. The association is an organization dedicated specifically to the promotion of business in the town of Chester Town. It shall vigorously pursue objectives considered by the membership to the amount to creating a healthy process and sustainable downtown environment rather broad reaching. Four years ago, we discussed including the shopping area, uh, shopping, that means the shopping centers, um, into the Downtown Chester Town membership, but quickly realized that they are, one, private property with their own dynamics. We also realized that we have peculiar issues that much of the shopping areas and all the citizens, no matter what district, use the downtown with expectations of vitality and excitement. In other words, we are really another shopping center, if you might think of it that way. I'm here as the current president of the Downtown Chester Town Association, and I say current from my second term ends at the annual meeting in February. The meeting is February the 20th, 5:30 to 7:00 at the Acations Catering Forum Room, and I hope that everyone will be there. The new wish to formally invite the mayor and the town council. New blood and new ideas often create new opportunities. It keeps an organization fresh and alert, I believe. Therefore, I will not be running for president for this next term. However, I will not be fading away by our bylaws state that the immediate past president remains as an ex officio member of the board for two years. There are many projects and focuses we have started to which I hope to contribute. The important part of my message is that there won't be a seamless transition. In other words, we've really tried very hard to make the... There won't be an enormous change in the officers and in the focus and the flow of the Downtown Chester Town. The slate of officers have been carefully considered. Only members of the DCA are permitted to vote, so I encourage all to join us as a full member. Of course, nominations by members from the floor are permitted. And the slate of officers are President Kristen Owen. I think you all know Kristen. She works for the Chesapeake Bank. She's been our vice president... Kristen, who knows where she is? Um, she is with the Chesapeake Bank and has been our vice president and very, very active with the DCA. Our first vice president will be Barbara Jolmason, and I don't know whether you know Barbara, but she ran. She was a moderator for the forum for mayor. She's also an attorney. She's been an attorney for the DCA pro bono for four years. Incredibly helpful. And then our second vice president, which I think is pretty much of a coup to get Bob Ortiz to be our second vice president, because Bob is... Has such vision and he's so busy. And, um, when I first became president, he said, "Nance, throw up." He said, "I don't wanna have anything to do with any organizations, I'm too busy." And he said, "But I'll give you a $25 donation." And I said, "Well, how about if I just apply that to membership?" So he's come from that point to be, um, has said that he would be one of the vice presidents. We're really excited about that. And then Catherine Bursette, do you know her? I don't know whether you do or not. She's with the Garfield Center. She's the Garfield Managing Director and Chief Administrative Officer. She's going to be the secretary. And Bob Ramsey has agreed for the, um, how many decades now, to continue as treasurer and for two reasons. One, so that it's gained seamless, and two, so that we have a retail person on the... At an office in the organization. The DCA remains informed and connected to what is happening in Chester Town. We regularly attend the town council meetings, other meetings, and events with other organizations such as the Chester Town, the Greater Chester Town Initiative, Garfield, River Arts are all important to our knowledge of what Chester Town is all about. And that's what I'm trying to promote tonight is because I just came from a Greater Chester Town Initiative, and I wish that you all would attend them occasionally. The magnitude of what is happening in Chester Town is phenomenal, particularly the teaming and the networking of organizations working together and building upon each other. We sponsor business seminars and informational sessions with an eye to build relationships. We look forward to more concrete ways to relate and help each other. The DCA is responsible for events, tasks, and projects such as Taste of Town, Fountain Park, Fourth of July, Crazy Days, Holiday Lights, and Pine Rodeo, with enormous help from the town, especially Case de Moi and Bill, help us with the lights, uh, also, and the town workers. Thanksgiving through winter holidays, events such as Santa Claus, Christmas Parade, DCA is host of the American Cruise Line. The digital sign remains very important and will be fully functioning, I absolutely personally promise. This year, we sponsored the candidate forum for the mayor. One of the things that is fairly new to us, but it will be a standing committee of our annual meeting, is the curb appeal. It was received by Nancy Butler and was added to the DCA as a way to emphasize how beautiful Chester Town is and show how much we care. Curb appeal volunteers have worked diligently to improve the appearance of our downtown by weeding, restacking borders, and nurturing the tree under beds. Foxwood planters, troughs, flowers have been added. The painted bench project in Fountain Park, painted by our five Chester Town schools, was a curb appeal project led by Patricia Pfeifer. A new project in the alley at Spring and High, and I don't know whether you're familiar with it, we're teaming with the River Arts. For the boarded windows and doors will be trompe l'oeil scenes through windows of the historic sites around town, including George Washington at the college, and is planned for the spring. We will work with River Arts, and their new directorate, by the way, is Diane Glenskrunkner, who was a real coup for River Arts to get her. This year, we plan to emphasize the War of 1812, the theme of red, white, and blue flowers, which will open in the spring and be... Should be flourishing nicely by August. And then we hope that the businesses will participate in many different ways, including flags, the War of 1812 flags, the 15 star flag. If we're able to raise the funds, we would like to add hanging baskets where possible. Much of what we have accomplished has been because the town has supported our efforts. And I'm not asking for money, let me make that clear. As mentioned in the last meeting, DCA will be focusing on the War of 1812, although there was never a specific happening here in Chester Town, which we mentioned last time. We've been graciously invited to participate in the East Coast and Canadian Celebration. We are planning an overnight encampment of the Eastern Shore militia, and you met one of them, Mark, Erb Dubin, who was here the other day. With the opportunity to learn about the militia and the war, the parade on Saturday will possibly be 100 reenactors, which is pretty amazing. We'll probably have 150 reenactors here in town that morning. And both the British and American militias, and a flag raising and reselling ceremony. DCA would like to continue working closely with the mayor and town council to improve our economic equation. We wish to enhance the link between the college and the downtown businesses and services. We wish to work together to design a strategic plan to encourage new businesses. And I brought this up in the past, a strategic plan. That's the one thing to me is really lacking. We are going off in all different directions and doing different things, but there's never been an over... An umbrella of planning that has all the different pieces in it. But we're working on the pieces, but we haven't put them all together in a concise way. We, um... We would like to see more residential opportunities within the pet business district, such as apartments above stores, so that we are alive day and night, for instance. Parking, some subjects. Forever, we've heard that there is a parking problem and a permanent solution is complicated and costly. Merchants park, often in front of their own stores and on the side streets close to their businesses. They are encouraged to park, quote, "elsewhere," but where? The DCA would like to propose an inexpensive temporary solution. We propose that a driveway be created into the back of the town yard, and that portion of the yard be cleared for merchant parking, designated as such with signage, specifically that, merchant parking only. Bob Ramsey, a finishing touch, is able to reproduce a count map on metal. We propose a double-sided map to be placed at the entrance to the public parking area on Cannon Street behind High, with signage designating this area is for welcome Chester Town visitors or something of that sort. We also have the Cannon Street parking lot, which is owned by the town, but I know that there's some requests for other uses of that one, to put it that way. I really would like to see if we can explore this and really make an effort to get to the... I've had... I constantly get comments about, "There's never anywhere to park in front of a shop." I've talked to businesses, they realize they park in front of their shops, they realize they park on Cannon Street just around the corner. But I think it's... The problem is, is that there's no designated place where they know that they have a home, that they can drive in there and find a parking place. That also brings up the subject of meters. If it is decided that the meters will be bagged indefinitely, we propose that the bags be stamped with, "Our meters have been retired because we appreciate your business." If we can do that and also get the merchants to park elsewhere, it might be a beginning of a true solution. We do not propose that the actual meters be removed until we have a better idea of their importance. We are aware that there is a survey of businesses about the meters. We look forward to those results. So I'm not saying one way or the other. I think that needs to be proven, which is the best way to go. The marketing of Chester Town. The one area that has been neglected and where the town can help is to assist with general marketing in Chester Town. Not a specific organization nor business, but simply the magic of visiting our historic river town. We highly recommend teamwork between Kent County Tourism, DCA, and the town council. As a member of the tourism board, we are constantly looking for avenues and ways to emphasize our importance. May I recommend inviting Bernadette Bowman to a meeting to present what is being done now? You will be pleasantly surprised how vast that coverage is. During the board, we've asked Bernadette to put together a sort of a pump, dog, and pony show about what they do. I was shocked when I first came on the board and asked exactly what do they do, and, for instance, what publications. And Bernadette pulled out a stack of magazines, 34, 37 magazines that they're in fairly regularly, with not only co-op ads and ads, but also with articles written by reporters about Chester Town. We highly... You'll be pleasantly surprised at the vast of the coverage. However, there are many ways we can improve and expand. The next subject I have is really came out of the last meeting, and for four years... I don't think you people really know what Chester Town and how it functions until you get involved in it. I mean, and really involved, not just coming to an event, but when you really see the magnitude of the volunteer hours in this town. And I'd like to sort of introduce the subject with, if you could visualize not having any of the nonprofits, not having any of the volunteers, and what would it be like? We'd be a skeleton of a town, because that's where all the vitality, the excitement, it's why people come here. And the volunteers, as you said there, Serena, last time, is that we not only... They're not only important, but we need them. I mean, it's critical that we have these volunteers. At the last meeting, it seemed apparent that the understanding of the magnitude and importance of our nonprofit community, along with both minor and major events and door projects, is lacking. The first step to that understanding is to imagine what Chester Town would be without those organizations, and there are many cultural events. Those all volunteer organizations, for the most part, are self-sustaining. Having staff is rare. Their budgets are maintained by memberships, events, grants, and donations. Visitors to Chester Town do not come here because of our shopping centers. They come here, participate, and spend because of the character of our citizens, businesses, and events. The arts, our history, the environment, and our businesses play a major role to that end. So when an organization comes forward asking for support, they are not necessarily asking for money, but general support for the project. However, a tangible way to show that support is to donate something, large or small. As a town council, we know this. We've known this. We've known this for years, because people keep coming to the town council. I've sat here and listened to a small little run looking for $50 or whatever. Excuse me for losing my place here. As a town council, we know this. When an event or project is met with disdain and it reverberates through the community, it's not a matter of them and us. We are one, all together, in marketing Chester Town. And compiling how many volunteer hours that are donated each year by our organizations, I hope to have an idea of their budgets and their... That they support. Just a gross amount, what each organization has to raise every year just to keep it strong and alive. If one were to equate those hours to an hourly wage, I believe it would be easily found that those organizations more than contribute their fair share. I will get back to you with those numbers. And we discussed that in the general... In the Greater Chester Town Initiative tonight, and they're very excited about sharing that information. May I propose that a discretionary fund be set aside, no matter how large or small, which doesn't make any difference what the number is, so that the town council can express their appreciation when they want to, and support from time to time throughout the year initiatives. Waiting for the annual budget rounds most often does not relate to an organization's ability to understand what they need. A simple application can be submitted for needs as they are found, and it could be any small amount, or it can be just a simple, "You're here, we thank you so much for doing what you're doing." And then to finish, we welcome our new mayor and new members of the town council. We have a fresh slate for which to grow and improve. We look forward to a better and exciting working relationship. DCA stands ready to assist. Respectfully submitted. And here's my talk. And if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy, how many... How many members do you have in DCA?
We don't have as many this year. We have about 50, or 25 or 50. We've had as many as 75. And to tell you the truth, I think it's because we've had a very long drought in the membership. We have been stretched so that we haven't put enough time and effort in it. And you're... If you're wrong, is that if you work hard enough and you do enough, that you'll just get members, and that just doesn't work.
Yeah.
You have to work on it. But I think we'll have a good... For this year, we're about to have renewals.
Of the businesses downtown, what percentage would that represent? Like a third of them, or a half, or...
I would say probably between a third and a half. Going up close to the third level. We, um... We need to do better about it. And the way I feel about it, we also have friends of the residences. I want everyone... I wish that we could just say that membership is $2. To me, what's more important for DCA is that we are an organization for everyone, that they have a voice, and not only a voice, but they have a means of communicating. We have to charge them something, because we have no money except for that money. But if we could have just... Just say here, you know, $5 a year and you're a member, and then try to get everything. And I'd like to see us frankly go all the way out to Brooks's Mill in that area, because that's the area that's truly forgotten. You know, we're downtown, the shopping centers have their own dynamics, and their own landlords, and their private property, you have to remember, but it's the ones in between.
I agree. What I see as nice about DCA is it's... It's an organized group of people that, as a politician, I can go to and ask for advice or information. So I would agree, whatever you got... I mean, I know you guys work your tails off to make downtown as nice as it is, and, uh, you know, just, uh... If there's anything I could do to help you attract more members, that would be great, because we... As you said, we need... I need... It's great to have a group like that to bounce ideas off of before we just start implementing changes that maybe aren't favorable to the business owners themselves.
Well, I'll tell you, um, you know, the... I was spent four years trying to get us credibility, because we had really... We were doing it. We had no members, and I didn't even know whether there was a need. And I didn't ask to be president, I was just asked to help us get started again. So I funded a appeal for the DCA, thinking in the back of my mind, if we don't get any members, then we should fail, we should just... Some organization should just die. But we had 25 in two weeks. I mean, that's a lot, considering coming from nothing. And that told me that that's really necessary. The other thing that I found when I started is, you know, a lot of negative stuff going on. I mean, the businesses didn't like the town, the town wasn't listening to them, they weren't asking many questions, the businesses weren't offering any questions, they didn't like the police, they didn't like the... They didn't like the fact they had to clear the snow, you know, the whole... Bill's probably heard it a thousand times.
I'm surprised you left my name out there. Thank you, thank you.
And so I thought, well, you know, I said the first thing, "Don't come to the executive committee of the DCA with a complaint unless you have a solution." But we're not gonna listen to complaints. Come with a solution, and then we'll listen to the complaint. And also, I don't wanna hear another negative word about the police, or any of that sort of thing. Unless you get them followed, then you don't have a right to leave. And so trying to build up the credibility with DCA, to me, was important, so that the members would feel as though they're part of something that counts. And I think we've gotten to the point now that they are willing to come forth and can be a really good part of the communication and the dialogue.
My last question for you would be, the parking solution that you proposed, how many spaces do you think would... Would be optimal?
I have... Well, Chris, I went back there and looked, and I said, "Well, this is a pretty big space, but I'm not sure how the size of the..."
Yeah.
They'll leave me much better at that. Bill has said that there are buildings back there that probably have to come down, so I don't know what the cost would be. But I just know when you put out a blanket statement, or just a general generic statement, "Go find someplace else to park," they'll never do it.
Yeah.
And I've talked to businesses, and they'll say, "Oh, yeah, I know we really shouldn't park here," but they do.
Yeah.
So my thought was, well, fine. If we can find a place for them, and it says it's for them, then they have absolutely no excuse. I don't know this. I personally do not know the solution to the meters. I mean, Bob Ramsey says, "Why do we bag them at the very time of the year when we need people to keep turning over?"
Yeah.
You know, so there's another whole viewpoint that we hadn't thought of. I think that if we do bag them, we certainly should capitalize on it and say on those bags the reason why they're bagged, that we appreciate your business. I just had someone just a couple nights ago say that their daughter and wife said that they'd shop downtown a lot more if they could find a place to park. So maybe we don't build a parking garage, or all those kind of things, but maybe we start in a sort of somewhat systematic way of creating ways that we can improve it. So I'd love to work with you. I'd love to work with you.
I'd like to see us have those blue directional signs that most towns have when you come into town. You know, the big blue and white sign with the big P that directs you to public parking. I know when I'm in a strange place, it's the first thing I look for. We don't have those here. And there are parks on Cannon Street, and we should be directing people.
And C1 is gonna be in March, and C2, which is DCA, is April. So please help us round up the troops, because I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, it's the old proverb, you lead into water, but...
I hear you.
And I wasn't as sympathetic to businesses when you would ask them to do something and they wouldn't, or... Because it's in their best interest. However, you know, their business is quite complex. They not only go out and find the products, but then they have them delivered and try to display them, and then they have to account for them, and they have to sell them. And my God, if they don't sell them, then they've got to do something about that. So they're incredibly distracted, trying to keep... And then, of course, in this economy, it's even harder.
Any other questions for Nancy?
You mentioned a parking survey. Who's conducting that, and when do we expect it?
Well, I think Linda is...
I am.
Is asking some questions about...
I don't wanna...
Of merchants, of what they prefer.
I told you, I don't wanna bring it to the meeting.
And I'm sure you're gonna get all kinds of opinions.
I know, I have. I'm not finny, I'm not finny.
Couple of months, or...
It all depends on how long I talk to people. It's been a very expensive survey.
Not bad.
But also, we need to find out what other towns are doing. I mean, there's no way we have to reinvent the wheel. Anything we do, it's already been done, and all we need to do is track that somewhere. I'm going... I think I told Mayor Serena, I have promised that I would go to Berlin. I've made a date with a guy to be down there, and I just haven't gotten there, for instance. A town that's our size, not gonna have the $2 million marketing budget, for instance.
I'm a little bit skeptical that somebody who owns a business and the employees of that business in, let's say, the 200 block of High Street, is going to go up behind the boatyard to park and walk back if there's parking spots when they get to work down in front of their own business.
Well, you know, you have to start somewhere.
Right, I totally agree.
And it's not just... It's not actually the parking that I'm talking about is way down by the, what's now called the Tree of Life, but where the old Chester Town art league used to be. There's an avenue, I think, we can get back in there, so it's not quite as far. But, you know, you start somewhere, and then you ask them, but you find your businesses any better.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nancy, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thanks for four years. Very innovative.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, next order of business, the town manager's report.
Chief, I don't see you on the agenda here. Would you like to do your annual report now? Are you here for that, or did you just distribute it?
I thought it might be more convenient to do it next time.
Fine, great. Okay, that's... Get a chance to look at. Good. Okay, so let's just go right into this soil and turf restoration conference.
Surf?
Surfer.
Again.
This time I said soil. Anyway. I gave it... Handed it out last time. Is anyone interested in acting on it tonight? Got a chance to look at it? It's... Think you had a chance to talk to the garden club?
I did, yes. They are very excited about the prospect of having Miles do this work, because it's something that's very important to them, and I think it...
For this year, we're about to have remodels.
Of the businesses downtown, what percentage would that represent? Like a third of them or a half?
I would say probably between a third and a half. Going up close to the third level. We need to do better about it. And the way I feel about it, we also have friends of the residences. I want everyone, I wish that we could just say that membership is $2. To me, what's more important for DCA is that we are an organization for everyone. That they have a voice, and not only a voice, but they have a means of communicating. We have to charge them something because we have no money except for that money. But if we could have, just say here, $5 a year and you're a member, and then try to get every single... And I'd like to see us frankly go all the way out to Brooks's Mill in that area because that's the area that's truly forgotten. You know, we're downtown, the shopping centers have their own dynamics and their own landlords and their private property, you have to remember, but it's the ones in between.
What I see as nice about DCA is it's an organized group of people that as a politician, I can go to and ask for advice or information. So I would agree, whatever you got, I mean, I know you guys work your tails off to make downtown as nice as it is. Now, just, if there's anything I could do to help you attract more members, that would be great because we, as you said, we need, I need, it's great to have a group like that to bounce ideas off of before we just start implementing changes that maybe aren't favorable to the business owners themselves.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, I was spent four years trying to get us credibility because we had really, we were doing it. We had no members, and I didn't even know whether there was a need. And I didn't ask to be president, I was just asked to help us get started again. So I funded a appeal for the DCA thinking in the back of my mind, if we don't get any members, then we should fail. We should just, some organizations should just die. But we had 25 in two weeks. I mean, that's a lot considering coming from local. And that told me that that's really necessary. The other thing that I found when I started, you know, a lot of negative stuff going on. I mean, the businesses didn't like the town, the town wasn't listening to them, they weren't asking many questions, the businesses weren't offering any questions, they didn't like the police, they didn't like the, they didn't like the fact they had clear the snow, you know, the whole, Bill's probably heard it a thousand times.
I'm surprised you left my name out there, thank you, thank you.
And so I thought, well, you know, I said the first thing, don't come to the executive committee of the DCA with a complaint unless you have a solution. But we're not going to listen to complaints. Come with a solution and then we'll listen to the complaint. And also, I don't want to hear another negative word about the police or any of that sort of thing. Unless you get them followed, then you don't have a right to be. And so trying to build up the credibility with DCA, to me, was important so that the members would feel as though they're part of something that counts. And I think we've gotten to the point now that they are willing to come forth and can be a really good part of the communication and the dialogue.
My last question for you would be, the parking solution that you proposed, how many spaces do you think would be optimal?
Well, Chris, I went back there and looked and I said, well, this is a pretty big space, but I'm not sure how the size of the park, they'll leave me much better at that. Bill has said that there are buildings back there that probably have to come down, so I don't know what the cost would be. But I just know when you put out a blanket statement or just a general, generic statement, "Go find someplace else to park", they'll never do it.
Yeah.
And I've talked to businesses and they'll say, oh yeah, I know we really shouldn't park here, but they do.
Yeah.
So my thought was, well, fine, if we can find a place for them and it says it's for them, then they have absolutely no excuse. I don't know this, I personally do not know the solution to the meters. I mean, Bob Ramsey says, why do we bag them at the very time of the year when we need people to keep turning over?
Yeah.
You know, so there's another whole viewpoint that we hadn't thought of. I think that if we do bag them, we certainly should capitalize on it and say on those bags the reason why they're bagged, that we appreciate your business. I just had someone just a couple nights ago say that their daughter and wife said that they'd shop downtown a lot more if they could find a place to park. So maybe we don't build a parking garage or all those kind of things, but maybe we start in a sort of somewhat systematic way of creating ways that we can improve it. So I'd love to work with you.
Okay.
I'd like to see us have those blue directional signs that most towns have when you come into town, you know, the big blue and white sign with the big P that directs you to public parking. I know when I'm in a strange place, it's the first thing I look for. We don't have those here.
Yeah. And C1 is going to be in March, and C2, which is DCA, is April. So please help us round up the troops, because I'd love to hear from you.
It's the old proverb, you lean to water, but...
I hear you.
And I wasn't as sympathetic to businesses when you would ask them to do something and they wouldn't, or it was, because it's in their best interest. However, you know, their business is quite complex. They not only go out and find the products, but then they have them delivered and try to display them, and then they have to account for them, and they have to sell them, and my God, if they don't sell them, then they've got to do something about that. So they're incredibly distracted trying to keep, and then of course in this economy, it's even harder.
Any other questions for Nancy?
You mentioned a parking survey. Who's conducting that and when do we expect it?
Well, I think Linda is, has asked you some questions about merchants, of what they prefer.
I told you, I don't want to bring it to the meeting.
And I'm sure you're going to get all kinds of opinions.
I know, I have. I'm not finny, I'm not finny.
Couple of months or...
It all depends on how long I talk to people. It's been a very expensive survey.
But also, we need to find out what other towns are doing. I mean, there's no way we have to reinvent the wheel. Anything we do, it's already been done. And all we need to do is track that somewhere. I'm going, I think I told Mayor Serena, I have promised that I would go to Berlin. I've made a date with a guy who's down there, and I just haven't gotten there, for instance. A town that's our size not going to have the $2 million marketing budget, for instance.
I'm a little bit skeptical that somebody who owns a business and the employees of that business in, let's say, the 200 block of High Street is going to go up behind the boatyard to park and walk back if there's parking spots when they get to work down in front of their own business.
Well, you know, you have to start somewhere.
Right, I totally agree.
It's not actually, the parking that I'm talking about is way down by the, what's now called the Tree of Life, but where the old Chesterstown Hart League used to be, there's an avenue I think we can get back in there, so it's not quite as far. But, you know, you start somewhere and then you ask them, but you find your businesses any better.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nancy, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks for four years.
Very innovative.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, next order of business, the town manager's report.
Chief, I don't see you on the agenda here. Would you like to do your annual report now? Are you here for that or did you just distribute it?
I thought it might be more convenient to do it next time.
Fine, great. Okay, get a chance to look at, good. Okay, so let's just go right into this soil and turf restoration conference.
Surfing turf.
This time I said soil, anyway. I gave it, handed it out last time. Is anyone interested in acting on it tonight? Got a chance to look at it? Think you had a chance to talk to the garden club?
I did, yes. They are very excited about the prospect of having Miles do this work because it's something that's very important to them. And I think everybody sees the need for doing something about the soil compaction and whatnot, so.
Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for Miles?
The talent of Chesterstown, that's right.
How much?
Twenty-five hundred dollars, right here in the...
I'm going to sound like a Grinch, but we're paying him $2,500 to have Mr. Anthony come over and tell us what to do with our trees. Why can't we have Mr. Anthony come over and tell us what to do with our trees and save $2,500?
No, I don't think that's it. That's been done, hasn't it?
And the University of Maryland has people who check soil. They do it for nothing.
But I think we're putting the cart before the horse if we go ahead with this without changing the way in which the park is used. What's the reason the soil is so badly compacted unless we change the use patterns of the park?
We don't have to get an expert to figure that. It's because those people put all those places down there and stomped the grass into nothing. So we've got to keep people off the grass is what it amounts to.
So where are we going to, what are we going to do about the market?
Grass doesn't grow in a parking lot, and it's not going to grow while we allow those merchants to tromp all over the thing.
So I think that's the question we have to resolve before we agree to throw good money after bad.
We're going to pay him $2,500 to come out and tell us to get the people off the grass, but if the council wants to do that...
How about this? Let's have Miles come in here and tell you what this contract is all about and why it's different from what we've done in the past, okay? He's great, he's local, he does fantastic work, and I think we need this impetus. If you're saying it's too much, let's have him break it down. But this isn't just having... Professional, and I'd like to see what he has to say. And he did offer to come, I just didn't realize there'd be this inertia.
But that doesn't change my point, Bill.
I know.
I know Miles, I've worked with him on the Wilmer Park, in fact, my D's eradication project there in the marsh, and I have admiration for his work. But we have another decision to make, is how do we prevent ourselves being in the same position by this time next year if we keep using the park the way it's used?
Let's hear what he has to say about that.
And I'd like to say something too. There's no reason why you can't consider designing the park for the way it is used.
That will change the character of the park.
And he didn't, well...
How? It won't eliminate any trees.
No.
It'll also, I just would suggest adding more brick. It's a marketplace. Peter, how long's it been a marketplace?
Growing up here...
You did an article on it that the Maryland General Assembly designated...
It was established as a marketplace in the 1700s. And it was still being a marketplace when I was a kid growing up here.
You mean for produce or just in general?
For produce.
Yeah, but the addition of the artisans' market has happened since I've been living here. That's much more recent, and that's the part...
It was green before we got those people in here.
That's the worst damage.
I'm not against them, I just would like to see them go over on a hard surface or something. I would love to be able to look at the park and see it green in the summertime.
It's a classic gem of a traditional Victorian park.
You can't even see the park on Saturday, it's so full of tents and booths and...
All right, so I'll have Miles come in and just give you a five or 10 minute thing at the beginning of a meeting, and we can talk about solutions to all the problems. And it is, it is an item to wrestle with for all the uses that we're so proud of. We have to address them all.
Well, I want to say a couple more things here. I do think we need to be careful though, because the farmer's market is a good thing. I mean, it brings a ton of people into town every Saturday, and I think that's important. That whatever solution we come up with, the location, if we move people, it still has to be as central as we can get it because we want it to...
The farmers never destroyed, the farmer's market was here for years and years and years, and the park was fine, there was no problem.
I did have to add about 10 feet of brick.
Yeah, well, that's good, and it worked out well. But then it started getting to be too popular, it's like a lot of things you...
Well, to this end, this is a good time for me to actually bring this up. I had a meeting with the head of the garden club, Barbara Macbeth, and one of her top lieutenants, and she is very interested in having us form an official, basically like task force of interested stakeholders, like...
If we have any meetings, we're by the public side.
Public meetings, absolutely, advertised, open to the public, anybody can come. But she had a list of about 10 people that she thought should be on it, like Owen, and the people that actually run the market, Linda was going to...
And I'd like to introduce Wanda Gorman. She is the new, she'll be in charge of the artisans' market this year. Beverly Miller has given that up to Wanda, and Wanda's here this evening.
She's like my assistant, along the pathways, midway through.
So anyway, if this task force were to be created by us, and I was told her we would want to move on this as quickly as we could because it's a hot issue right now, especially with spring around the corner, and they would study it for maybe through April, say, and try to come up with some solutions on how to alter foot traffic patterns in there and some long-term maintenance suggestions for us. And they would come back to us and report back in April or May. So that is probably going to be coming at our next meeting.
I don't know how many people read the, I guess all of you did, I assume you did, you read the report from the task force, talked about perhaps moving the farmer's market and the, what do you call it, artisans' market?
Artisans' market.
To a location that has, gives them a little more room and so forth. And preserve our park. I mean, seriously, the fountain park is Chesterstown. Well, I have visitors from outside of town, that's one of the first places I take them, is down to show them the park. But, and I've had people say, what's wrong with it, you know, they cut the grass, so...
Okay, so in the short term, we'll have Miles come in at a date that's amenable to him, and we, probably next meeting, I will suggest that we create this task force. And again, it would be an official public body, because if we create it, it's public. And just take it from there.
Great, all right, great. You all asked that there'd be more winter activities, and the People's Bank heard you. They're having, I don't want this to be mispronounced, they're having Chesterstown Grass, not Chester Town Grass.
Gra.
Gra.
Chester sign.
Chester Gra.
March 1st, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., all proceeds to benefit the Backpack Programs, a friendly Mardi Gras celebration, People's Bank High and Spring Avenue. 3:00 p.m. parade, fun food, festivities under the tent, they're having a tent in their parking lot. Gumbo by Blue Heron Cafe, Brooks's Tavern, Fish Whistle, the Imperial Hotel, The Kitchen, Lemon Leaf Cafe, and Uncle Charlie's Bistro. They'll have music, silent auction, kids' activities, and if you want to have a float in the parade, we're having an activity in the parade. All you have to do is talk to Karen Willis at the bank and fill this out. They had something like this inside last year. Their parade, by the way, is probably just going to go around the park itself. Chief, I think they're going to be talking with you about that. I've sent some emails back and forth. I think it sounds great that their new president is from Texas, and he's a chili cooker and he likes hot food, so I think this will be fun and a perfect activity for the downtown. I'm sure the downtown, the DCA already knew about this.
I've put it out there.
Great.
It's also a good cause, which always helps.
The next thing I have is, there's a couple of grants that I think we have, we've put our foot in the door for. Case is working on this. The National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resiliency Competitive Grant Program currently open, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources and the Center for Watershed Protection, who are interested in applying in conjunction with several coastal Maryland communities under the Community Coastal Resiliency Planning category. They chose Chesterstown, they called us, and we sent an indication that we were interested in being in that. It says that this project will be a good complement to Chesterstown's current work that contributed to the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Effort, which has included wetland restoration, living shorelines, rain gardens, and other stormwater projects, including a step pool conveyance that treats runoff from a substantial portion of the Chesterstown's Fourth Ward Commercial District. All we have to do is provide 50 hours of staff time as in-kind support. And we'll hear more about that later. It goes also well with our waterfront activities. The other activity that we're interested in is Chesapeake Bay Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns Grant Program. It's supported by funding in the United States EPA, State of Maryland's Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bays Trust Fund of the Department of Natural Resources. The goal is to help communities implement sustainability plans that reduce stormwater runoff, increase tree canopy, improve local and bay water quality, enhance the quality of life in communities in Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, DC, West Virginia, Virginia, portions of the Chesapeake Bay. Very similar to a program we had a few years ago where we measured the canopy of the town and planted hundreds of trees in trying to expand it to that 40% level. This is all good, this is all good, and our chips are in on that one too.
I especially like that one because that, to me, that greening initiative was one of the best bangs for the bucks that we've gotten. Those trees, I mean, and I saw this time and time again with the planning commission, when you include nice mature landscaping in areas that don't have it, it really, it's a great thing for the environment, but it's also just, makes the town look so much nicer. And they have a shelf life of decades if you treat them well, so. The other thing is stormwater, I want to make that one of our green priorities. I talked to Linda a little bit about this, and I think grants like this are a great opportunity for us to kind of pioneer some retrofitting of, for example, High Street, which just sends gallons of untreated stormwater directly to the Chester River, and it's, you know...
Kent Street.
Yeah. I know you're protective of your ward, Linda. You've got to start something.
That's the silver biolite in town.
So...
All right, good. A few other things, Kent Center, this, last year Kent Center had this really wonderful Best Buddies, let's see, what do they call it, the, Kent Center and Washington College Best Buddies 5K Run/Walk and Wheelchair. It's completely on the campus of Washington College, except for the part that goes on the rail trail. And I checked with them, because last year people thought the rail trail was closed when they did part of their loop, and I found out it is not closed. I just want to give you as much notice as possible that that's going to be on March 29th.
Ask them not to paint it up this time either.
That's good, I knew, I knew there was something that... The race times are from 8:00 to 12:00, so, and it's a Kent Center project, just to give you as much notice as possible. So if you're walking the trail that day, maybe they might hit you up for donation.
I mean, they could use chalk or something, Bill, but not paint. I mean, there's still paint on that trail.
I think that was the MS, well, I think it was the MS Walk that painted, that used the paint.
I don't know who painted it, but they painted it pretty heavy.
Not the Kent Center. A couple other things, you know, I think there's been a very happy ending on the SOS Child Care space. I don't have it formally, I have a letter from the daycare space user. I think it's Care Top, Child Care and Learning Center, they've moved right in under contract with SOS. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I have this letter that goes through that. Zoning wise, they're just fine, they've taken the kids that were there from the neighborhood, and I think there are actually some faculty's children there, and picked that up, plus brought in their own, so. I think that the stability of the center is more or less helped or may be guaranteed by that, and I want to get more information to give you on that.
Is it still low cost? Because I know the previous childcare was relatively expensive.
I really don't have that in this letter, but it's a, it's a good question. I assume that it is, that it's for, people with needs are still going to get their needs covered.
I don't know whether Carrie's still on that or not.
Oh, I'm going to find, I've tried to call her twice on it, but I think just the idea of having a daycare thing in the community and not, and not having the SOS center closed, there is two, two really good things right there.
Absolutely.
If I could add, there is office space available upstairs, individual offices furnished or unfurnished, and you have the security of off-street parking, lighting, elevator.
Not only that, but the space, they rent it for very, very cheap. Because I was there just a few months ago, and the director of the center was telling me the rent. I've since forgotten.
It's about, I'm not going to quote it definitely, but it runs around $300 a month.
Right, right, pretty manageable.
For an office. And there's boardroom space available.
Now, is Chesapeake College, I think they still have like some distant learning courses or something.
No, Chesapeake College does not rent space from you. I'm on the board, so I don't know what the limitations are for Chesapeake College being in there now, but there is a commercial kitchen, and they did have a grant for culinary classes.
I think that's great, it's quite a worry. A couple other things, too late to put down, the, I got in touch with the principal at Garnett about the If I Were Mayor contest. They did, they, and I talked to the state too, they did send out packets. This year's essay theme is engaging my community, and if, I know you've booked a lot of your time, and I know your time's valuable, but I think that going up there and talking with the fourth graders about what engaging your community might be would give them, gives them the tools they need to write this essay. Because in the past, I've seen the kids really need to find out what towns do, to have ideas, and then their ideas are great, they're just like unloaded. Teachers probably know this, but it's great to see. All they need is a little information to find out what you do. So I'm going to ask Principal Clark if we can set up something, probably, I would say, half an hour at the most.
My son was trying to write an essay for this, and he's like, Dad, I don't think I want to be the mayor. Do I still have to do this?
I know that Kent School has won it before, and I just want to make sure that the fourth graders in the school in town would do it, and I know there's probably two schools. But other schools have been doing it regularly, there's been some reluctance at the elementary school in the past.
Well, it would be nice if we can get copies of their essays and invite them to come to a meeting.
Well, maybe we'll throw that out as bait, and we say that while we're up there. I sent everybody a copy of this agroecology thing from down the shore, the local government exchange for the eastern shore, Harry Hughes Center for Agroecology. And I've talked, I've called Nancy Nun a couple of times, haven't gotten through to her. I want to see if this is more agrarian or county, or is it, you know, is it for town? Because if it's for towns, that comparing with other towns might be even easier than we thought before. So I'm going to get more information on that.
I filled mine out and sent it down there by email, it's a very easy thing to do. I don't think I read it as thoroughly, I was grading them all, 1 through 15, and then I finally read the last paragraph and said, give me four. And I went back and gave them the top four, but...
I didn't get the survey itself, I got the letter that you sent, Bill, but I didn't get the survey form that you mentioned.
The survey's on there, it's on the internet anyway.
I need to go to some website and get it.
I never got the survey with it, in fact, I...
That must be, I went on the internet, it comes up on the internet, and you go through.
Really just, other than their survey, trying to find out what they can help us do.
I see Nancy from time to time at the dog park, and I would be glad to tell her that you've been trying to get in time to talk to her.
I'd love to message, so. And the last thing that I have, the, we received an email from Washington College concerning their academic building and their efforts to secure funding from the state of Maryland. And I think everybody got a copy of that forwarded to them. They asked that we send a letter of support, the town send a letter of support about the building, which would provide classroom and office space for the recently established Departments of Anthropology, Environmental Science and Studies. So if, in the past, we've done this two ways, if the mayor writes a letter, as the mayor himself or herself, that's fine, but if it's a letter that says the council wants, then the council has to say. So what is your pleasure on this?
I agree, I do too.
I'm certainly in favor of it, for one thing, they're going to do a lot of building and they hire people to, it's going to put people to work just while they're building that building, so. And we need some building. $4 million is nice.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor. So do we need to make a motion on this?
I think you should make a motion to, to send a letter off.
The mayor and council.
Now, I move that the mayor and council send a letter of support to the college for their funding search.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? What about the, the recreation?
Oh, reminder to everybody, the Recreation Commission's having a meeting at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Community meeting, right in this room tomorrow night. And I hope that it's gotten enough word around the community, because they told us last week that they were going to do this. So I hope everybody, I guess it's too late probably to get this out to people to hear it, but I want to make sure that there's plenty of people and they've, they've got a lot of ideas, and they want community input. So that's the end of my report.
All right. Our next order of business is the mayor's report. I'll be pretty brief here. I just wanted to remind everybody that we will be starting to get public feedback on the task force's recommendations that they submitted to us, and we talked at length about it our last meeting, and the meeting that we discussed is going to be Monday, February 10th at 7:00 PM on the second floor of this building, open to anybody that's interested in coming. Hopefully, if people come, they have read the report. That's important. And we are interested in hearing basically what people think about what was written in the report. The way it's going to work, it'll be kind of like a public hearing style format where everyone will have a limited amount of time, probably about three minutes or so, and we'll be keeping time just to, for logistical reasons. But if you guys are interested in coming, please attend, and if you know others that might be interested in coming, help us get the word out.
I understood last week when you were talking about this first meeting is about the marina, though. It's not, are you taking the whole task force or just the marina?
I was thinking it would be about just the report in general.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you said the marina next.
The marina will be, once we send out the RFP and get an engineer on board, then we would have a whole separate sort of forum with the engineer.
This one's on the whole task force.
This was just, what do you think about the report? What elements did you like? Were there anything in there that you think we shouldn't do? Like, just that kind of feedback. I just want to open this up to the public as much as we can before we move forward with any actions.
Are you going to set an end time?
That's a good question, yes. I would like to, maybe.
Seven to 10?
10. If you're willing to go till 10, yes. I think that's more than reasonable.
9:45. It's a big report. Are you going to break it into manageable chunks and just allocate a certain amount of time to each part of the report? I mean, it's.
It's a blopper.
Picture us jumping all over and without it being, you know, very well structured discussion somehow.
It's an open meeting, yeah.
I wrestled with that as well, and I don't know, it's just, it's so all encompassing. I think that would create problems of its own.
Maybe you're right, yeah.
So, let's just go with it and hopefully it'll, we'll get some constructive comments.
Have some follow-ons.
Yes. We also discussed our last meeting, meeting, starting to have separate meetings with our business leaders, and my proposal was that starting in March, we have one a month and break the town up into commercial districts, zoning districts, basically. We discussed March as the month where we would try to get as many business centers in the C1 general commercial district to come and basically just generate a discussion about what's working for them and what challenges they face.
Are they coming to us here?
I would, that was my concept, yes. Probably, again, second floor of Town Hall, or maybe, depending on how many people come, we could do it here. So, I would suggest maybe just the Monday between our Monday meetings, so that it's nice and symmetrical.
10th or the 24th?
In March.
Which would be the 10th, I believe.
The 10th or the 24th, yeah.
Is that amenable to everybody? How about seven? So Monday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. And so obviously, we're going to need to invite these people to the meeting. How would that work?
We could do flyers and ask Sydney to deliver them to C1, break out this one.
Yeah, and we, we know where all the C1 is.
Yeah. Okay, so that's not like an insurmountable task.
There's a C1 downtown.
It's what we need to do.
Okay.
It's what we need to do. We had the mailing addresses, too. So, I think both.
C1 is Ken Plaza and Washington Square?
Yes. Yeah.
I had that wrong, didn't I?
I'll also put it on the poll to board on the website.
And I would suggest that although we want, we basically want to talk to the business centers, that people, members of the public are welcome to come and listen.
And certainly the newspapers.
In addition to the actual individual business owners, if it's a shopping center, any chance we'd get the actual owners of the shopping centers?
Absolutely. I'll let Dennis Solacato and David Cordish know.
I mean, I know it's a long stretch, but.
We're doing this, I think it's important that they know.
It would be great if they, I'm actually having coffee with Dennis Solacato tomorrow. So I'm on it, Liz. Lastly, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. I'm having some preliminary discussions with various stakeholders throughout the community, not in official public capacity, but I want to begin brainstorming. One of the things that I talked about in my campaign, it was mentioned in the report, was having more sort of big events, marquee events in the winter months. And I feel like one of those opportunities would be to have kind of a signature weekend for the town in December. I've had preliminary discussions with Elizabeth Reese of Washington College, and she, my initial idea for this came, Sultana was part of this Colonial House Tour that was put on this past December, which basically benefits Garnett Elementary School and Kent County Middle School. And when I was down at the boat, there were probably 100 people that came through, and I was asking them all where they were from, and all of them were from Delaware, or Philadelphia, or DC, or Northern Virginia. And they'd come specifically for the house tour. And whenever I hear that, it immediately turns a lightbulb on for me, that that type of event has potential to really drive people to town. And so what I, what I, my, what I feel like is we have a lot of cool events that happen throughout the month of December, and without reinventing the wheel, it would be, we need to repackage them and market them as one big weekend, so that maybe, you know, we tag on to First Friday in December and make the Saturday after that huge, and make that an annual tradition, and take events like the play at the Garfield, for example, and just package it all into a nice unified marketing piece that, so that weekend becomes like the tea party or the downrigging of the holiday season. So, I just wanted to let you know that this is coming. I'm working kind of behind the scenes with people that already do events like Garfield, like the Colonial House Tour, like the folks that run the parade or decorate the town. So there's a lot of ideas, and I'm going to start brainstorming with these folks, and I'll just keep you guys posted as things develop. But again, it wouldn't be like an official town task force, but you know how this town is, I don't want people to start talking about stuff the mayor's doing and have rumors floating out there. I am working with people in the community to brainstorm ideas for developing a signature event for the town in December. And I would hope that you, since this will be probably in your ward, we'd need if you were on this, in this group.
Is, is that her Colonial Christmas photo?
The Colonial House Tour, yeah. I would hope that would be a big part of the weekend, and that's why I mentioned her specifically, her and I got talking, and she's had a lot of ideas the last couple of years and just.
She's done, I think she's done it the past two years.
She has, and she's had some challenges kind of getting everybody on board, so I told her I would help in any way that I could, and so this is, this is the first thing that I'm going to do, is just try to get everybody in one room and.
The other big event, the first weekend of December, is usually the Corral's big Christmas concert, you know, with the brass, you know, with an orchestra, and I think the Garfield is usually the next weekend.
Yep. Those are the kind of things that we need to find out.
I can, I can find that one out.
Okay, great.
Because it's probably already decided when it's going to be.
Right. And that's it for me. So moving on, the last item for us is ward report, so starting with Ward 1.
Well, not much in a week, but I did want to make a point of having raised the issue last week about snow removal on Campus Avenue. It was much better in our last snowfall. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was that a resident of the first ward expressed concern about her perception that school buses were speeding on Campus Avenue. Is the chief still here? And you informed us about, about that. Do you want to, I can just say that the police department did run a survey on Campus Avenue, and there was no speeding going on. Apparently, these large and rather noisy vehicles, it's common perception that they're going faster than they are. You supported that.
Yeah, no, I.
But I was really glad that we got that cleared up.
I've known that for years, and you, I think I sent an email out saying in Galena that they used to complain about trucks going through Galena at 60 miles an hour, and we ran radar up there, and we might get them five or eight miles over the speed limit, but we didn't get anybody going 60 miles. But it sounds like it and it looks like it.
It's an illusion.
Because they're noisy, and if you're in your bedroom when they go by, it, it sounds terrible.
It feels like 60 miles.
Anyway, I just wanted to thank him for dealing with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that it, Liz?
That's it.
Okay, Linda, Ward 2.
Okay, this is, it's February, and the, I announce this every year, the Maryland tax credits for property. If you've applied for it in the past, you should be getting an application this month. And if you don't get an application, you can call toll-free 800-944-7403. Now, the Maryland state property, and this is also renters' tax credit, is tied to your income, where I believe the homestead credit is tied to your property assessment. So, if you've applied for it in the past, you should get an application this month if you don't call, and if you didn't get the phone number, you can email me. My email address is on our website. Now, I have to get with Garnett Elementary School to see if they've completed their reading count contest, which former Councilman Gatto promised to buy pizza for, for the winners.
Is that in the budget?
No, he was paying for it.
Oh, is he still on the hook for it?
Yeah. Didn't he give me the money?
He didn't give us any money, but a good promise.
I'll get it, I'll get it from him. But anyway, I have to find out from Garnett if they've completed the contest, and you will be absolutely blown away at the number of words that some of these students read each year. And then Friday night was the Chamber of Commerce Best of the Best 2013 Excellence in Business Awards, and I'm, was very lucky to have two winners in my ward, JR and Larry Hoak. I always, how, I'm always afraid I'll pronounce his name wrong. Larry won an award, and this was his first year in business in Chestertown, and then East Coast shredding and crow farms. And it was an absolutely lovely event, and the food was magnificent, done by the Imperial Hotel. And I just, Marty was there, and you can't give enough credit to these businesses, to our businesses, which are the heart and soul of our town, the small businesses. And I've been trying to get figures from FY13 and so far in FY14 on how our hotel tax money was spent, and I haven't gotten anything definite for this year yet, but I just want to say, and Nancy, I appreciate your comments at the last meeting, you don't have, we as council people do not have to know ahead of time whether somebody is going to present at one of our meetings and ask for money or for a donation. That's, hasn't been the way it's worked since I've been on the council, and you should anticipate this from our businesses, from our nonprofits, and especially from our Department of Economic Development. So, you were there, you saw all of the business owners, you know, the businesses there, the people.
I missed very few chamber things. They do a great job. They're, they've got good membership and it, that's what keeps us, the whole county going.
And they need advertising to keep them going, and we need events here in Chestertown to keep Chestertown alive. You're talking about a Christmas event, and I'm going to go back to the $5,000 that I asked to be donated to economic development for the War of 1812, for advertising, and I still have that on the table, and I would still like to see that money go to Bernadette.
She'll get her money, but we're going to do it at a budget time. It's the proper time to do those things.
The proper time.
You're the one that used to fight against all these piecemeal budgets.
I didn't, I, I never fought against our businesses.
Oh.
I have the majority of businesses in my ward.
Okay. Well, I think.
And.
The consensus of the council was that the budget time was the time for us to do that. That's coming up very soon, and you can make your motion again.
As far as the emails go, and I'd like you to speak up now, the emails that I've gotten from Pat is there's no reason why we couldn't appropriate $5,000 to Bernadette right now.
She said July's fine.
Actually, I talked to her Friday night, and she said if she gets a letter of commitment, the county would accept that. Now, that's far before July.
I think I'd be amenable to a letter of commitment.
I think the commit.
In this fiscal year.
I got you. My, my thing, being a new person, that was my second meeting, I don't, I have no idea what our margins are, if you follow me.
Now, I want to, I want to stop you there.
Okay.
Before the three of you were sworn in, you got copies of the budget by email, which I thought was very accommodating by the town office. When I was elected, I didn't get anything, and I came here and I sat in the seat and knew nothing. You were given copies of the budgets beforehand, you were also given the expense accounts, and you have been emailed as much information as possible. And when I ran, I ran on the budget. That was the basis for me running for this council seat. So, to me, I think you've had time to look at the budget, you know, if.
You ran for mayor on the budget, too, pointing out that just what you're saying was not true. We don't have, we don't have dedicated funds, we don't have this, we don't have that.
This is hotel tax money.
About $3.5 million we lost, so.
That needs to go to advertising, needs to go to economic development. And I'm going to, I'm, I'm just going to stick with it. It's a big event that's supposed to come to Chestertown. Even if there are 5,000 people show up and everybody spends a dollar, there's your $5,000.
I'm not in principle, Linda, against this expense. What surprised me was Bernadette, in her presentation, didn't actually come out and ask us for money.
No, she didn't. I did.
You, I know, but that became as a surprise to all of us, and there's no reason that we should, couldn't have been told a few hours before the meeting, I am going to propose a $5,000 expenditure tonight. All of a sudden, it comes out of nowhere, and I was taken aback.
It's not going to be the first, it's not the first time, and it's not going to be the last time.
But.
Well, I think we should have some forewarning when expenditures are going, like that, of that size are going to be proposed.
I don't, I don't even feel like we need forewarning, as long as we, if we had, for example, a line item in the budget for just that type of situation.
I said, we'll put $20,000 aside for special events and advertising.
Well, and did Nancy McGuire just suggest that?
Then we say $5,000 to come out of our $20,000 rainy day or whatever the heck you want to call the thing.
There, there isn't even a capital improvement line, you know, I mean.
Nancy McGuire suggested that very thing tonight, a discretionary fund. I think it's a good idea.
We don't have a capital.
Well, you can call it discretionary.
Do we have any money in it?
Our capital improvement are, are laid out as capital improvements, but they're not off of.
Wait a minute.
Of revenues from, from hotel tax.
No, I'm not connecting that with hotel tax.
This is just like a lot of things that we wrestle with. There's enough money in the budget to do it this year or next year, if, if that's what the council wants it to be. I think that for, to the extent possible, you let each other know that you have an initiative that you think stands above our regular budgeting, and I'm with you on it. I mean, we spend too much arguing about what account is that going to come out of?
Here it is.
Check the funds on hand and in the bank. Times are better than they were two years ago, so, and I think. And I think you make a good point that there's a lot of funding that came with the hotel taxes. In the beginning, nobody was using it for everything, anything. And we built a visitor center and we staffed it. And we do many other things. We have a website. We've done a lot of, a lot of things. We clean up after parades. We have police protection at parades. Anything that goes to tourism probably has its genesis with those funds. So you can be generous, and we'll, and we'll cover you. We'll show you where you are at any point in the year.
And usually, we do this at budget time. That's what I'm saying.
But I've been asking for these figures for over a week. We have $90,000, over $90,000 that comes into the town of Chestertown from the hotel tax. You have $48,000 goes to the apartment, to, $48,000 goes to the visitor's center. What I've been asking for for the past week is an itemized list of FY13 expenses. An itemized list, vendors' costs.
For the visitor's center?
No, 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 for the remainder, for the $42,000.
We don't budget, we don't budget for minor incomes specifically. We don't say, okay, here comes the money from hotel taxes. We don't even actually do it for all the taxes that are paid for real estate.
But there were expenses. There, this money was spent. How was it spent and how much was-
What was spent?
$42,675.
For the visitor's center.
No, you have $48,000 for the visitor's center.
We said to you all this today.
I know.
Let me show you the other page.
But it's not itemized. It just says what can be used.
That's to guide you.
Yeah.
If you want to say, did we spend every dime of the hotel tax for tourist activities? Then we can start, we can give you that, but it will have to be looking at, okay, how long did the police work on a parade this weekend, or the tea party, or whatever? The expenses at the visitor's center do not add up to $90,000.
I can understand that $48,000 out of the $90,000 went to the visitor's center. I want to know where the rest of it was spent.
Into the general fund. It hasn't been spent. We're at mid-year.
FY13 specifically. Where was it spent?
It paid for the street crew to clean up after.
Forty-some thousand dollars?
Hey, I actually, I think she told you some of the other activities that were-
Yeah, right.
Let's read it. Fireworks.
Fireworks. Holiday decorating, music in the park, what is not covered by donations.
Website management, cable TV, our, having our videographer here.
Advertisements in Discover Kent County Earth Day and proposed 1812 donation.
I put that there for you. I believe that this is the good thing, but I don't get to vote. Sure, it could.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to hear. Sure, it can come out of this fiscal year.
You ought to move that.
I did.
Say it in a form of a motion.
I make a motion that we take $5,000 from the hotel tax revenue and give it to the, do I have specifically, what is it now? A donation for advertising to the War of 1812? What's the title of that grant?
Like a matching grant.
Yeah, it's, they're collecting funds to match a grant that they will get. The grant is a matching grant for $67,048. Half of the match is $33,524. And I make a motion that the town give $5,000 specifically from the hotel tax revenue.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hmm.
No.
We got to a motion.
You can vote too, Chris.
I'll vote in favor of it.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good thing. I'm not arguing.
I was going to vote in favor of it-
It was the process that we went through last time.
For the next fiscal year, because I think that's a cleaner way to do it.
I was going to vote for it in the budget meeting. There's no problem with that, but I just, I think we ought to know about these things. I agree with Liz. People come in here and somebody wants to make a splash for themselves, so they spend our $5,000.
Let's finish the vote, and then I agree.
It's not the taxpayers' money. It comes out of the hotel tax revenue.
Okay, Linda, hold on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you in favor, Linda?
Yes, aye.
Any opposed?
No, yeah, I say budget time, right, no.
Okay, so that is approved. I would suggest, I like, I think we're on the same page, that in the budgeting process for the next fiscal year, it might behoove us to have a special line item for, like a discretionary amount of, say, $20,000.
It would be nice to have a separate budget for the hotel tax revenue.
And you know, as far as that goes, I think we can just have a justification in the budget process, your workshops where you go, hotel taxes, and here are the items that we're going to fund with.
Yes, and the amounts.
But as far as making a discretionary account, we won't be doing that. It's just too many items. But I think you make a rationale for all these things. You spend over $90,000 a year, I guarantee it. And we're going to work some numbers on, on just what it costs to have police out there all weekend or the street crew. And it's worth it. Please don't get me wrong. I'm saying that I think a lot of stuff we do is for tourism, 100 percent.
I would guess we spend more than $5,000.
Downringing. Anybody that works with the town knows that we produce for tourism-type things.
The reason a smallish discretionary fund would be nice is because when, when people do come in and we're not anticipating them asking us for money, then, again, I'm not, I don't know where it's coming from. So it would be nice to have just a little fund specifically for special events.
Can we do the one meeting to introduce, the next meeting to pass, and just-
That's what I get.
Well, I was thinking we would do that during the budgeting process for the next-
No, no, I mean for, but you have, you have the fund, and then you have this small process where you go, hey, I really think we need this. We meet twice a month. It ought to be adequate time-
Yes, for us to think about.
-to get anybody taken care of in between budget time. So I think that is a good idea to have $20,000, say, and the rationale being that you're getting $90,000 from the hotel tax and you're giving it back.
Okay, Linda, do you have any more business? Power move.
What, when do you want to start having the budget meetings? Want to wait until after March?
My understanding is we don't have a great read on the income tax figures till-
We won't promote it.
The property tax. She should get it this month.
We'll get, we'll start getting it the end of the month. By the end of March, we'll have a great picture of where we were and what we're getting. But as far as capital items, I know the Recreation Commission, part of their meeting tomorrow night is to talk about that. I want it from council people too. What's, what's important in your ward for capital items? Rose has been mentioned. We have $200,000 this year that we're going to be spending this spring.
We've got some tremendous pot.
Well, please don't look at roads in the middle of winter. They never-
You can call them speed bumps, but they're really, they're like circles.
But really, that'll help us a lot to know what are the initiatives in your wards? Or as mayor, you know, what do you see as absolutely needing to be expended next year? And we'll start working that in.
So mid-April?
Need-
I think we could, if you're not exhausted from meetings, I think the end of March would be the earliest we should have our first budget workshop. We usually pass the budget in June, okay?
How many of these workshops do we have?
We had two last year. And I think that's probably enough. The second one was a lot of what we had in the first one.
How long are these meetings?
It's about an hour and a half or two. What you'll get is, if you look at this year's budget, you'll see the categories. You'll learn the categories, and they're, they're not complicated. We may have two less discretionary accounts next year if the housing projects go into another entity's name, but the marina's a separate discretionary account. It's not rocket science. One of your initiatives is to look at the funding of the marina. We'll be showing those grants coming in again this year and maybe more. So, but capital items, we need to know what are the, you know, that's the big deal, I think. Where do you want to see money spent? Where aren't we spending it? Where aren't we giving it back? Where we should be giving it back if we-
Well, you know, it's a gray zone there. You have a lot of people coming town for the tea party, and you have policemen and town workers all working overtime. They're working overtime because we've got all these visitors coming in. But in the same token, we need safety and we need cleaning up. Does that all come out? That's not going to be paid for. Every time we have a function, it's not going to be paid out of that hotel. It's paid out of the taxpayers' pocket too.
You're talking about the same thing here, though. You're talking about the justification of those activities. You're actually agreeing.
Believe it or not.
In code. All right, Linda, do you have any more business for word two?
Last meeting, we forgot to say something about the meters. We were going to do the free till 10:30 in the morning, but we didn't say the start date, remember?
I thought it was starting immediately.
Was it?
Yeah, and we put it on constant contact, so that's what I was saying.
All right, that's taken care of. I'm finished.
All right. Sam, word three.
God, that's a big list. I hope you can go over that. There's an email circulating around the college. One of our workers is looking to start a cycling club for Chestertown and the surrounding area. I thought that was a pretty fantastic idea. He just sent around another email today saying that he's gotten a lot of responses back. So there's going to be an interest meeting on Friday at 4 o'clock at Hudson Hall at Washington College. And I think, you know, this could very well be the start of something pretty incredible. You know, you look at the Seagull Century down in Salisbury. I mean, that event attracts 8,000-
Really?
-cyclers to Salisbury every single year. So, I mean, this obviously is going to start as just something that's recreational, something that's fun to do, something leisure for everybody to participate in on the weekends or however often they choose to do these rides. But it very well could end up growing into something special. You know, potentially Chestertown having its own century ride, attracting some cyclists. You know, we always talk about how this is such a great place for recreation. So this would be a really fantastic, you know, club if it does get started up. And I think it will. I think it will. There's definitely a lot of interest in cycling. So I'm really curious to see how that interest meeting turns out. I'll be there on Friday, so. And then that kind of leads me to, you know, another thing, the Chester River Rowing Club. I mean, how cool would it be if they could do a big regatta? You know, we're always talking about having more events. And we have, and judging by their website, and I think we're going to join this summer. Very well organized. Annapolis also has a crew regatta, and they sponsor one every single year. That's another big event. So just, you know, different ideas that we can start looking into potentially, working with some of these different recreational clubs, so.
The Maryland High School Crew Championship is done every year at Wilmwood Park.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize. I stumbled onto it last year, and there's like hundreds of people there.
Almost every weekend in March is booked with regattas from all over the place. But I think a lot of it has to do with high school stuff.
Right, right, right.
But we need to do a better job of tapping into those, that crowd, and getting them, getting them into the town.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah.
And then I've sent out, you know, just preliminary, just like feelers out among, you know, some of my colleagues when it comes to the Chestertown website, people who aren't from Chestertown. And I just say, you know, take a look at chestertown.com. Let me know what you think. And the feedback that they give me is, is, it's pretty rapid. And the first thing they always say is, the site doesn't look good on a cell phone.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, when it comes time to, you know, redevelop and enhance the chestertown.com website, we're definitely going to have to look into mobile for sure. So I'm really curious to see what everybody else sends back. I gave them a deadline of about a week and a half, so I should be getting some. And these are people who actually work in the industry.
That's great.
So they're going to give me some very good professional feedback, and I'll definitely share that with everybody, so. So those are definitely some of the big things that I was thinking about that were just kind of percolating through my mind. But, but yeah.
That's great. I know that I, during my campaign, I talked a lot about needing to revamp our website. And Linda, I think is on board. I've talked to her about it, and I know you are too. So that might be something that we want to discuss, like maybe at our early March meeting, discussing our current provider and what we want to do moving forward.
Maybe you could even come in and say, kind of explain those things, what we can do.
What I was thinking is he, our current provider might, I would like to give him the chance to come, explain why the site looks the way it does and that kind of thing. And then we can have a discussion about what we'd like to see. And either, you know, he can tell us that he can do those things, or maybe we want to bid it out. And that'll be obviously a decision that we need to make as a group. But that's a decision that we should make soon, because that needs to happen.
Right.
Have you, you, you saw Washington College, what is, what is?
Yes.
That is awesome.
Awesome video. We need a video, maybe not like that.
You can play and sing, and we'll dance behind you.
We'll see. Oh, really? You just said that on camera, Linda. Okay, word four, Marty.
First, let me just say, some of the nicest people I know ride bicycles. So if you get that going, that'd be great.
I see you all the time.
Last week, I gave you all a copy of the campaign finance reporting. I hope you had a chance to look at it. I'd like to put it on the agenda for next week. We can discuss it, mark it up, change it the way you think. We'll just come up with a final draft. And then I'd like to see it introduced the next week or the week after that, and get it taken care of, and then we won't have to worry about it.
So can we officially-
So if you haven't read it, for crying out loud, read it and make the changes that you want. And that's word four, other than the same thing everybody else has around, is our pothole problems and so forth. Everything's moving pretty well. We seem pretty happy.
Just for point of reference, are you pleased with the draft that you handed us? Are you happy with the draft that you handed us?
Yeah, I, that's, that's not a, it's not the exact copy. I made a lot of changes in that. There was some, there was some parts in there that I just thought was not apropos to Chestertown. Some of the numbers didn't go, and some of the things they wanted to do with your funds when you, when you were done with it, you could give it to, oh, they had about five different places. And I thought it either ought to go to the charity or to go to the town of Chestertown. It doesn't go to individuals or some other function. Some of it was for county functions. And if we're going to give it to county, let's give it to the town of Chestertown, which you're running with.
So the draft that you gave us is a draft, like a draft that you found-
I did, sure, yeah.
You made some up. You made a few modifications and then-
I didn't do all that much.
And then gave us the draft that you had modified.
I modified.
Okay, just, just checking.
And I said before, I left that primary thing in there because I also think, but this is a charter amendment, we can take it out if we don't change the charter. But I think the charter should be changed. If there's more than four people file for the office, then it ought to be a primary because you can win with 20 percent.
Yes.
On a different note, the Recreation Commission, do you have minutes?
I have a set of minutes from when they met, but yes, there should be minutes.
Okay.
I think that bill I wrote probably has them.
Right.
I can get, I can send them to you tomorrow if you'd like.
Yeah, please. They're not posted online, are they?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, question or comments from the peanut guy?
I have one question. Follow-up on Whitehall. Do you have any update on the condition or what's going on?
Don't you have anything? I know it's been worked on.
Yep.
And you were also working back getting a list of some of the bank-owned properties.
Right, I know the-
Has that been worked on?
Yep. And in fact, the three properties that I mentioned before, the two on Maple Avenue
Avenue and the one on Cannon Street, they're having water damage. Uh, the bank, whose name I won't mention, they swore it wasn't their property until I told them that they paid the taxes last year at the, at the sale.
What about Whitehall?
Yeah, well, I, I can get you in touch with the bank that owns that. They're, they're, they're doing the restoration efforts. I thought you just asked about the other properties.
Yeah, well, Whitehall I know is Harbor Bank of Maryland.
Right.
And have you contacted, they're doing something about it?
Oh, yeah. They had restoration people in, within three days.
Okay, and?
The other.
500 block of Cannon Street, you said you contacted them and?
I was starting to tell you that, that it's really on the 300 block of Cannon Street and two, one on Maple Avenue and one on North Cross, all originally owned by the same individual, all owned by a bank that, that wouldn't admit they owned it. So I've proven to them that they own it and now, uh, I've also found out that their attorneys were supposed to send this mortgage in lieu of forfeiture or foreclosure to the owner who was happy to sign it because he had declared bankruptcy. And that's being done now. They swore they, they never got it back. So I made a series of phone calls and I'm gonna do that with every property that's, that's lacking care, that, that we find out, that our search for others is through our utilities, uh, computer where we'll find out zero use or extravagant use, they usually indicate the same thing. It's vacant and not cared for. If you know about something in your ward, let me know, that'll accelerate it. But right now, we check water, our water readings from the last quarter and it's effective. But this is really in the crack. It's, this is in between a person who walked away and a bank who can't really manage it. Meanwhile, the buildings can be pretty much destroyed. The Cannon Street House, the bank, this bank, who I won't name, said, "Well, we don't know, that's got a lot of mold from, from leaking damage. This place is gorgeous." Hey, it's gonna cost us about $60,000 to fix it.